So I'm Senna Kot, Mr. Presley, and it's time you ready?
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order so that we can hold our public session. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. You stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take your seats, please. Some announcements, as I mentioned, Mr. Gilbert will not be at this meeting, and Mrs. Stevenson will be leaving about 30 minutes into it. We also want to point out that this meeting is livestreamed. And for instructions on the livestream, click on the livestream link when prompted. For a Google account, enter the following username and password. For username, type in, in lowercase, boestream@shenschools.org. For password, type in lowercase, boestream. Also in this meeting, we will be making a modification to the agenda to add one more item to the Personnel section. Dr. Robinson will review the details. And we also had an executive session prior in which we discussed several personnel matters, superintendent evaluation, and collective bargaining. So at this point, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda or actually to modify the agenda for Dr. Robinson's?
I motion that, Bob, Mrs. Rajat.
Yeah, first, second. Dr. Robinson, you want to go over that in more detail, please?
So essentially, we added, am I, one second, please. Essentially, we added this item, ratification of CAC contract extension to the agenda after it was initially published to the public. So subsequent, I'm asking the board just to make that technical modification to this agenda.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
I see all sets of hands, any nays? No nays, motion carries. At this point, we'd like to move to Board of Education comments and reports. And let's start off with our student representative, Grace. Anything that you would like to comment on?
Sorry, I couldn't get my mic on. Yes, actually. So recently, I've been in the works of working on a mental health project, just something small. And so I did want to announce that I'm going to be putting that out in the next few days. And I'd also like to say that I'm actually very proud and not surprised, but I guess I'm, well, I'm pleasantly surprised to see the recent student representation and people really going out to make their voices heard, especially with the students that were involved in planning the protests this weekend, or yesterday, sorry, and everyone who's been trying to do what they can and people who are voicing their opinions. And I'm glad that people are getting involved and I'm glad that the student body is engaged. So I did just want to say that, but I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace, and let's turn over to Mrs. Miller. Any comments from you?
I agree with that, Grace, and I'm glad that you mentioned it. I think it's important that we do have to acknowledge what's going on. And I think it's important that we support our students at a time like this. So other than that, I don't have much, so moving on.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Hoffman, any comments from you? Mrs. Hoffman, did you want to make any comments?
It looks like she's frozen, Bob.
Okay. Let's go to Mrs. Rajat and then turn back to Mrs. Hoffman if she can unfreeze.
Thanks, Bob. Actually, I just, kudos again to our students for voicing, you know, their First Amendment right to share and protest and in doing it in such a positive way. I think they're such an example to many of us. So again, thank you, you know, for being a voice that is respected and heard. And also just to thank our community for being patient with the changes, with also the ballot voting and also the recent executive order, which can be confusing. So I appreciate everyone being patient, but the most important thing is that they do support the budget that we have put out. And so I just want to thank everyone for that. Otherwise, because we have such a full agenda, I will pass on everything else. So thank you. I apologize.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hoffman.
Yeah, sorry about that. I literally lost the link as Grace was talking. So and I had to go to a different computer, so I apologize for that. I know we typically give our meeting reports and we do have a culture diversity meeting tomorrow, but I'd like to use this time to talk about the current climate. And I believe it's important to recognize our unsung heroes, those being our administrators, our teachers and staff who continue to work hard behind the scenes to respond to the needs of our students and families. And I know you're working tirelessly to get our students to the end of the school year. I know that there's still coursework, so it still feels like a long way to go, but we're almost there. Also know that that all are working to transition to summer and the fall. And I want to thank those who are continuing to volunteer behind the scenes, who are taking the time to make sure that the moving up ceremonies happen, that the clubs, I know there's several clubs that are running. They're trying to also booster clubs. Everyone is trying to keep things moving forward. And also the collection of food, that's a big effort. I know there was, there was a big initiative today through the community and it was well received. And I honestly hope we see that, more of that. But I wanted to also share that a colleague of mine and a good friend recently shared a Mike Tyson quote, and I felt it was pertinent to what we're going through. And he said, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the mouth. And we, you know, we were talking about all the changes that the district is going through. The public health crisis feels like a punch in the mouth. And at times, it feels a lot more like a deluge of punches to the mouth. Our district has responded as best it could at the time. It continues to respond to a situation we did not foresee before this crisis, when we were reviewing safety plans and reviewing education plans. This was something you could not plan for. But even so, we're continuing to move forward, we're making adjustments along the way. And at times, it seems we're making abrupt course, abrupt course adjustments. But keep in mind that a school district with almost 10,000 students that is being served by 1,800 staff, employees, administrators, teachers, and a Board of Education of seven, that's a lot of people. That's, that's a big, that's a big ship to turn, but we are doing it. We realize as a board and as human beings that people make mistakes and especially at a time of uncertainty. And we will continue to do so. In the best of times, you make mistakes. But please understand that we will continue to recognize and encourage every chance we can. We are here for our school district and our community. And I do pray that our bus and school budget pass. We need that certainty at this point in time. We need it to move forward. Thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Mr. Gilbert is not here, so let's go over to Mr. Delalo. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. The school district has for some time been working to achieve a greater degree of diversity and equity. And the lack of diversity in our population in terms of how people are distributed in the population, isolation of various groups from one another leads to lack of understanding and unfortunately, fear and unreasonable responses to one another. And I think we've seen the most adverse effects in terms of loss of life through the pandemic and the actions of excessive use of force in instances, totally unwarranted use of force. And a lot of this comes simply from isolation and failure to know each other as human beings. I think all of this points to the importance of the work that we are doing. And I hope that we will rededicate ourselves and put as many resources as necessary into the effort to overcome what we've done to ourselves in many instances, simply by our failure to really be with one another and understand one another. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Delalo. Now, Mrs. Stevenson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a comment I wanted to make. First of all, I don't see anybody that's from PTA Council on this call, but I wanted to thank them for the meeting last week and to give the, they let the candidates, all the candidates, an ability to speak and tell a little bit about themselves, because in this time, you know, this isn't a normal election process. You know, what I did find interesting, and I've said this before, is that people and the community members that feel strongly about running for the board, I listen because I'm very interested as to why they want to run. And it's interesting because always usually hear, when I get on the board, I'm going to, and I'm going to, and I'm going to, and I'm going to, and a lot of ayes. You know, I want to always say, as, as very connected that I thought before I ran for the board that I was in being in PTA and doing everything, and I knew nothing. I knew nothing and were not anything without the other six board members. So it's just interesting to me, the perception of what people believe, the actions and what we do around this board table. And you know, I've said it before, and I tell the story all the time. It's just, it's, it's just, it's really eye opening to hear what people's perception is on what they think happens and what we do and this kind of perceived power that we have. And we are not, we are powerless without, I'm powerless without my six other colleagues. And it's not even a power, it's a collaboration. It's, it's, we're put here by the community and to do the work in collaboration with the district and to do policy and to make policy. And again, work with the community, the students, everybody. So it's just, I just wanted to comment because it's always striking when I hear people and the reasons why they want to run for the board. So I just wanted to throw that out there tonight, my own editorial.
Thank you. Okay, some comments from me. A lot of members have spoken about what's happened the last couple of days. And clearly, it is a major point in history and in civil rights as to how we are making some major shifts, both in our communities, in our states, in our country. Clearly, a lot of voices are going out there, a lot of protests. Peaceful protest is perfectly acceptable, a violent protest probably not. But these lead to actions and actions also sustain processes and change how people do business. And I think that's something that we all need to be aware of. We have accomplished a lot in the district in terms of how we approach mental health, how we approach equity with our practices, how we address school security. We also have to realize that in some cases, we can't do it all. Some cases, we are expected to follow rather than lead. I would argue that how we reform police actions is probably not within our purview. It's something that we follow, but there are things that we lead. We lead in education. And so I look forward to a lot of the comments that will come through, both from board members and the community, as what we can do to continue to improve education and also to look for ways that we can radically improve education. Now's the time to have a mindset to no longer accept, well, we make gradual changes. Now's the time that some more significant changes could be brought forward. So I'm keeping that in mind as we have these discussions throughout the year, throughout the summer, and definitely want to move forward. I think we are a great institution of education that can lead, and we're leading like champions in some of the things that we have done. And we should be proud of that. But also, like a champion, we don't rest on our laurels, we find ways to further excel. So with that in mind, let's switch over to public comments. Does anybody want to make a comment? I'll make the standard statement. Opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. This is a meeting held remotely. If you're a district resident, please send questions, comments via bo@shenschools.org. All questions, comments come into the office of the Public Information Officer and are shared with the board and the superintendent. We will not address specific question comments, but ask for your name and address in the event follow-up is necessary. Public questions, concerns are typically addressed by the board president. Operational question, concerns are typically addressed by the superintendent and our desk knee. So do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak, starting with our student representatives? I'm looking in the chat. I don't see anything that pertains. And I see no comments from Mrs. Defisiani. So at this point, let's turn over to the agenda and let's go to tenure recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the school district, we have four staff members who are eligible and being recommended for tenure this evening. We have their pictures for you to see. So our first recommendation is Lucas Labere. He is a high school assistant principal, and he is being tenured as a high school assistant principal, although he has recently taken on a different principal, assistant principal position from the class assistant principal, the tenure area is the same. So he's completed a four-year probationary period, and Mr. Augustineoni strongly supports the recommendation. Lucas is a leader, he's professional. He was instrumental in creating the shed, which is the Shenandoah students who works, work with our technology. He has done a tremendous job recently with providing professional development and online training for both teachers and support staff, among many things. So Lucas Labere is our administrative recommendation for tenure. If you will wait, I will read the other three. And then if we could give them a minute to just chime in as they're here. So Morgan Galant, Morgan Galant is being recommended for tenure by Malik Jones, Principal of Carrigan. She earned a four-year probationary appointment or completed a four-year probationary appointment as an elementary teacher. She's a passionate educator, a skilled educator. And what Malik had written was that she's a pillar of support for her colleagues in instructional practices. So not only in the wellness and the mental health capacity, but also in sharing her practices with others. Our third recommendation is Rebecca Perry. Rebecca Perry is completing a four-year probationary appointment in the area of Home Ec or Family and Consumer Sciences. Her recommendation was written by Rose Barra and Ron Augustineoni. And some of the comments about Rebecca, she fosters the culture of respect, productive engagement for all students. And there were a litany or a list of professional opportunities in student engagement, including things such as freshman giveback and supporting of the backpack program from Rebecca. And our fourth recommendation for this evening is Mr. Andrew Sheehan. Andrew is being recommended for tenure as a school counselor. He has completed a four-year probationary, probationary appointment. He's currently at Changal Elementary School. His recommendation for tenure was written by Mrs. Karen Skarka and supported by Mrs. Rebecca Carmen. Andrew, in the comments of Andrew's candidacy, at Changal, he makes students feel safe all the time. He has been a key person in their battlefield backpack program, and he coordinates the wellness team, among other things, at Changal. And as we are remote, student engagement remotely, Andrew has been taking tremendous pride in one-to-one counseling and engaging students as, as much as possible. So those are the four candidates for tenure recommendation this evening. And if we could stop for just a minute, I would let them chime in. Okay, so we'll start with Lucas.
Joe, can you please wait till the board take action? Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we'll wait till the board takes action. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to vote on the tenure recommendations? Mrs. Stevenson first, Mrs. Rajat second. Any needed comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please say aye. Do we have any nays? I heard it sounded like an aye, so I'm going to run that as an aye. Motion carries unanimously with the six of us. So I think we've taken our action. Go ahead, Mrs. Bush.
Okay, thank you. They'll be very brief. Lucas Labere?
I just want to say thank you very much for the tenure recommendation and approval. I've had a chance to work in several different school districts as both a teacher and an administrator, and I can't say enough about the Shen community as a whole. I work alongside an amazing team of teachers and administrators and have since I got here. We have tremendous support from a very competent and very accessible Board of Education, which was not always the case at other districts I've worked at. And that's a testament to, to this district, along with the district leadership. Most of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our students. We serve such a wonderful group of young people, and it's been my pleasure. And I look forward to a long career here at Shen. Thank you very much.
Morgan Galant?
Hi there. So sorry for the little party crasher. He is protesting bedtime, so I apologize. But thank you very, very much for the tenure nomination and approval. I am so grateful to be working at Shen and learning from the best of the best, other educators, administrators in my time here. I truly, truly love working here and supporting my kiddos at Carrigan, as well as around Shen when I started there. And I'm just continue to be excited to be on this journey and to continue to support our kiddos.
Thank you. Rebecca Perry?
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this opportunity, this recommendation and approval. I came to Shen as a middle school fax teacher and was put into a high school position, which I wasn't really sure I was going to thoroughly enjoy. And four years later, I absolutely love the position and the role that I'm in now. I really value the administration and the support that they give to not only the faculty, but the staff and the students. And the students really are what make the day-to-day jobs so awesome. So thank you so much.
And Andrew Sheehan?
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrew Sheehan. I just want to say a big thank you to everyone that helped approve this decision and to everyone who helped me get to this point in my career and in my life. It's such a major milestone. I wouldn't be here without my faculty, my staff, my families, my students, and my administration. It's really a huge milestone, and it's an honor to be working here for Shen and to continue working with my students and families. It's, it's a big honor. So thank you so much for making this decision. I look forward to continuing to work here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush, and thanks for modifying our tenure process where we actually get to listen for, you know, a couple of comments from each of the candidates that have been approved. Thank you very much. Nice touch there. Thank you. At this time, we'll go over to superintendent's report, please. I think Dr. Robinson's mute.
Yeah, I'm mute, Dr. Robinson.
So again, thank you very much, Mr. Presley. As you know, we're in the midst of the budget vote that we initially thought would have ended today, June 9th. However, per the governor's executive order on this past Sunday, it was extended to essentially the 16th, even though today is still technically the budget vote date, which has created a lot of confusion with people. Quite frankly, this whole process has created a lot of confusion with people. And, and we have tried to make the best of it, as one of my colleagues so aptly described. We were given rotten lemons and trying to make sweet lemonade. And, and it's unfortunate, but that is a reality that we've been dealt with over the past two months or so. With that being said, kudos to a lot of members of the staff that has done a lot of things to make this process as seamless as possible. And I'm just going to give you one example. Last weekend, we decided that because of the delay with the printing of the ballots and subsequently the mailing out of the ballots, the printer delaying the printing of the ballots. Shen did what we needed to do. We decided we needed to have options for people to drop their ballots in the boxes. So right away, we ordered from New Jersey and had shipped up overnight essentially ballot boxes, painted those boxes, put signs on them, all in time to have those boxes up and ready to accept ballots as well. And I'll just give you this as one simple example of, of one of the many things that has happened behind the scenes to make this, what has turned to be a very arduous process, somewhat seamless. This is the first time in the history of voting in the state of New York that an absentee ballot has occurred. And irony is, a week from, two weeks from today, on the 23rd, we will be opening up one of our schools, Changal Elementary School, as a polling place. So, so that's the irony of this whole situation, that we could, quite frankly, you had a different process, however, it wasn't the decision we made. And for those who are listening, it's not about blaming the governor. It's the reality of this process has been difficult across the entire state of New York. There isn't a single school district in New York State that hasn't struggled with this process because the printing of thousands and hundreds of thousand ballots has been tremendously burdensome for the few printers that had the capacity. Has been a tremendous burden on, on election districts and have been a tremendous burden on school districts. With that being said, we have had staff here all weekend, Saturday for 12 hours. Staff is here collecting ballots and trying to provide instruction. Sunday, staff was here from eight to four, collecting ballots, providing instruction. All day today, all day yesterday, Monday, staff here collecting ballots, providing instruction, trying to make the best of it. And even so, we know that there are some voters who did not get ballots, who thought they should have received ballots. And the reality of it is, the process isn't foolproof. And we know that now, clearly, looking back, tons of lessons, hopefully the state lessons to be learned if we ever go down this road again. We had probably a little over 1,000-plus individuals submitted for request through the portal that was open for almost two weeks for people to select ballots. And many of those were already on the list, so there was some duplication that we had to avoid. Over the, since Friday, I would say, we probably had almost 160 individuals stop by and collect ballots. Kudos to particularly Anita Adamcheck, who's here all those times, being very courteous and professional to people who, in some cases, may have had a right to be upset that they didn't get a ballot. However, all accommodations were tried to be made. And, and the date now for counting the vote will be June 16th. And so essentially, anyone who is submitting a ballot must do it by mail as of 5:00 PM today. All the ballots were business reply mail, so there's no need to put a stamp. Just drop it in the mailbox after you complete it correctly, sign in the outside of the ballot envelope, put the ballot in the envelope. So, so again, we'll watch that process very closely. And on June 16th, after 5:00 PM, we'll start the process of counting. And again, that's per executive order of the governor's executive order that we cannot start counting until 5:00 PM, which is again, another burden, to be quite frank with you, because when you're talking about thousands of ballots to be counted, it's a tremendous burden on folks to start it at 5:00 PM. And you know, when most people are ending work, this essentially will people be starting work. So we probably that night, probably go from five to about nine at night, see how far we make and pick the process up the next day. Right now, we have four voting machines secured to do the counting. And we hope that we can have those voting machines the next day as well to complete the counting process. So when we have a final tally, will be when the final count is complete. And that will be different across the state again. So you'll hear some school district will have announcement the night of the 16th. Some school districts may not have announcements for days in because not every county has afforded school district the opportunity to use voting machines to count. So many places will be hand counting thousands of ballots, which will take days when you think about counting and cross referencing and making sure that the numbers are accurate. So needless to say, this process has not been the cleanest process. However, we're still proud of However, we're still proud of the product that we put out, not only the budget that we proposed to the community, but also the effort that has gone into making sure that it's almost 30,000 ballots that we put on the streets, so to speak, are out there. And in terms of what's returned, we shall see after the 16th. Just two other quick updates. Again, this weekend, and it's become the pattern that some of the most significant education-related announcements happen on the weekend. There was an announcement, the executive order issued by the governor related to special education summer school, which has created somewhat of a stir because of the reality of, in fact, we just got today guidance in terms of how that should occur. So the announcement took place over the weekend, Friday going to Saturday. We got guidance today. And a big issue is, how do we ensure social distancing, appropriate PPEs for staff transporting students? And so right now, we're going through those guidance with a wide variety of individuals, including some attorneys, trying to understand exactly what those things are. Because not only the provision of safety, but the liability issues that surround this for the first time. So the point of this is that unfortunately, what's oftentimes reported in the news is just the surface. It's always the devil that's in the detail that we try to unravel to make sure that we're, one, following the laws appropriately. And I actually would say, one, making sure that we're keeping students and staff safe, two, following the laws appropriately, and in that order. Because quite frankly, you, we will not do something that jeopardize the safety of our students and staff regardless of the law, because at the end of the day, a life is more important than any regulation that's on the books. So we certainly want to take those precautions first and try to take those precautions within the respective guidance that's there. A third guidance that came out, again, this weekend that we're trying to unravel as well, is related to the APPR, the evaluation process, which we anticipated would be canceled because of the cancellation of the 338 testing and Regis exam. So that was finally issued. And tonight, as you saw, we have some tenure recipients. We will continue to grant tenure, even though the evaluation process for the year, for this year, has been suspended. And the final piece that came out this weekend was, again, hit the news pretty heavily, was the notion that after June 26th, if I'm not mistaken the date, that places can start to have graduation ceremonies of 150 individual total. It's not 150 graduates. It's 150 individual total. And quite frankly, you, the plan that we have in place at a high school is put together is a pretty comprehensive plan, and we will continue with our plan. And with Mother Nature on our side on the 18th, with a nice overcast day of 70 degrees with nice breeze blowing, we will graduate almost 800 wonderful members of the class of 2020, and their families will have an opportunity to see those young people cross the stage with their cap and gowns on and their first-of-a-kind Shen mask that this class will be the first to get, and quite frankly, hope the last to get, considering the circumstances. And so while we have had some tremendous challenges, be it pivoting to online learning and some of the many other things that are first, not only to us as a school district, but quite frankly, to the state, to the country, to the world, we have truly tried to make the best of the situation and tried to ensure that the quality that we are known for as a school district continues within these timeframes. So that's where we are right now with those initiatives as we move forward. So I guess the next big thing is, quite frankly, would be the outcome of the vote on the 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th. Whenever we finally count the last number of ballots, we'd be certainly communicating that out to the public as well. I don't know if there are any questions, comments related to that I could certainly address for the board.
Are there any questions? Please raise your hand. I can see most of your screens. If not, let's continue on with information items. Do we need to talk about the absentee ballot counting?
So I think I just mentioned that as a part of it. Right now, we, as of, I think, end of the day, we probably may be approaching about 4,500, 5,000. We'll see what the mail-in provisions provide over the course of next week. Again, the counting of the ballots is delayed until the 16th per the governor's executive order. And Mrs. Chase and Mrs. Adamcheck, they're lining up ample people to vote. The action by the board with the election inspector provided the opportunity for us to add additional capacity as necessary. So we'll add staffing based upon the final number, our estimated number of ballots received on the 16th.
Okay. Any questions on that one? If not, let's go over to revised 2019-2020 school calendar.
So again, I just wanted to share with the board that, and I'll just pull this up real quick here. Mr. Presley, can you see this document on the screen?
Yes, I can.
So as you know, due to COVID-19, we had to revise the calendar. And the revision largely came from what was initially spring break, became a six days of courses, as you see here in April. The 10th, which was initially Good Friday, became a session day per the governor's order. And the spring break week, the week of 13th, 14th through 17th, became a work week. Consequently, we had to modify the calendar to be consistent with 185-day calendar that was approved. And so subsequently, the end of the school year was modified. And you see here, the last day for all students will be June 16th, all students K-12. The last day for K-5 teachers will be the 17th, which will be classified as a superintendent's conference day for those teachers. And people are excited to meet and discuss thoughts, ideas, lessons learned from the remote experience, and then try to plan forward for the coming year. So pleased with a lot of the initial conversations or planning that's taking place for that date. And there will also be a superintendent's conference day for 612 teachers. And the last day for 612 teachers will be the 18th, which will be a second superintendent's conference day for those individuals. So those two days will be a great opportunity for people to, our staff and administrators, to get together and discuss some highlights, some things that we need to work on over the course of the summer. Because we recognize that this summer is going to be different in many ways. Because once we get the guidelines from the state in terms of what reopening may or may not look like, we'll then start to solidify plans, which will probably more likely require a lot of professional development, a lot of adjustment of courses. And so it would be a crunch for a lot of folks. Because again, if we get guidelines soon, that'd be great, as long as they're good guidelines. I always say, I don't want early and bad, nor do I want late and good. Because early and bad is just a long frustration. Late and good puts such a time crunch that we may not be able to execute as effectively as we should. So that's why, again, the board is technically asked to approve this calendar because it was modified, because we also have to submit the modified dates to the state education department as well as a part of our year reporting process.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
I don't have any questions on this. I'm just curious. At what point will we get, receive guidance specific to the calendar for the 2021 school year? If there are any changes? Would that be from board seats? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So remember, we actually approved the 2021 calendar already, and that's pretty standard. However, I anticipate that, should I say anticipate, the potential exists that we may very well be coming back to the board at some point once we get some definitive guidelines, guardrails, and come up with a definitive plan for reopening of schools, how that calendar may play out. So, and this is not only a Shen conversation. Regionally, coordinated through the capital region, BOCES, we have probably about, who knows, maybe 35-plus districts, not only regional, but some district in Western New York, that we all have in a very similar conversation, recognizing that we need to have more in common in terms of calendar, structure than not. Because we need to look at how do we maximize economies of scale across districts, recognizing that if we find ourselves in any type of remote environment for a long period of time, the sharing of best practices is going to be a necessity.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move over to first reading policies. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. The policies that are being presented tonight for first reading are policies that we reviewed at May's policy review meeting. Are there any questions regarding any of those?
I'm picking up no questions. So let's move over to consent items. First one is treasurer's report. Can I have a motion on this one? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Rajat first. Anybody second? Mr. Dalalo second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
I just have another question. Sorry. I couldn't get my mic off. So just looking at the uncollected tax revenue, I did notice that it was down, and I don't know if that's typical for this, if this is more of a reflection of COVID or if this is typical for what we see. And this is for this current year.
Mrs. Chase, if you're available, can you unmute and address that question?
Yes. The uncollected taxes go to the county. So we are made whole, I believe it's the beginning of April. And I know that we did collect all of those amounts that were due from the county. So collection rate from year to year varies a little bit, but I think it's pretty, generally pretty stable.
Okay, because this report is as of April 30th, so.
I'm sorry, beginning of May, not April.
Oh, I see.
May 5th. Because they do their bill collection or send their bills out from January 1st. They probably collect for three months or so and then reconcile all their accounts and then send out the checks for the balance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's back up. No more questions. Can I have a motion on this one?
I motion.
Mrs. Hoffman second. Mrs. Miller. All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays? No nays? Okay. Motion carries. Let's go over to the minutes, so we can combine these because there's no conflict with someone not attending one of those meetings. So let's, can I have a motion to accept the minutes? Mr. Dalalo first, Mrs. Hoffman second. Any comments or questions on this? If not, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No nays. Motion carries. So business meetings, this is about three times the normal meetings, and a lot of these things are very, carry a lot of implications. The first one, I think this one has been moved over to personnel. Is that correct? The CSEA contracted.
That's correct.
So we can bypass that. So let's go to the seven bids. Great in that we consolidate them. Can I have a motion on item two, seven bids? Mrs. Rajat first. Anybody second? Mrs. Miller second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays? Motion carries. Okay. Second one is a very significant change order for our HVAC systems with Dejese Sera mechanical. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Rajat first. Anybody second? Mrs. Miller second. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second one, I would like to, if we can show it, I think this carries some interesting implications behind it. So if it can be opened, please open it. Can we have a motion to discuss the contract with Seesaw? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Hoffman first. Mrs. Rajat second. And this, if you read through it, is a system to help K through two teachers provide more online educational services. Mrs. Wood, I see you're on the screen. Anything you wanted to add? If not, any other questions on this? I just wanted to bring it to people's attention. This is an action post-COVID to make next year better. Any questions on comments? If not, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller. Okay, all motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to the next item. We have several contracts related to IMS services. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman first, Mrs. Rajat second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And let's go to number six, contract renewal for Deer Oaks EAP. And combine it with seven, contract services for special education achievements and access therapy. Can I have a motion on combining this one? Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Miller second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So six and seven carry. Number eight, disposal of obsolete furniture equivalent textbooks. A motion on this one, please. Mrs. Hoffman first, Mrs. Rajat second. If any questions? If not, all in favor for number eight?
Aye.
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 Okay, no nays. And let's go to number nine, which is something with our claims audit process with Questar, BOCES, and any Mr. Pohl agreement. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Miller first. Any second? Mrs. Rajat second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand.
I have a question.
Go ahead with your question.
Is this typically run through the audit committee first before we present it to this committee? Kathy?
We have traditionally renewed this contract each year, mainly because they've been doing a good job for us and we haven't had issues with them. We can throw it back to the committee if that's your preference.
So we feel comfortable if it went through the committee?
So Kathy, one of the things that I would, if the board is going to do that moving on, you have to be mindful that the COSER submissions to BOCES also aligns with this, because this is a cross-contract with Questar. So we have to be mindful of that timeframe. So all these fall under those COSER services when we look at those cross-contracts. So just be mindful of the timeframe if that's the route that you want to go in terms of the timing of the audit committee in relationship to those things as well.
I just think it's important, and typically, we do meet before now, before it comes. And because the, just the timing of the links going live, I did not have a chance to reach out to the committee and to ask this question. But typically, we do have our meeting by now. So it's all, it's definitely COVID-related. I just would feel more comfortable if this went through the committee. I mean, that's the reason it's there.
So you want to bring a motion to cancel this, or?
So, well, the motion's already been placed. And I, I think that what Dr. Robinson is proposing is acceptable. And I asked Kathy if we could have that meeting and to discuss this going forward.
Okay, so going forward from now, or you want to do this with the committee before bringing it to the board?
So if it is exactly the same contract and we're rolling it forward, then I feel comfortable renewing it. But it is supposed to go through the committee.
Understood.
Okay.
Declared the comment here. All in favor for this, for approving this? Please raise your hand. I see four hands.
But I feel more comfortable abstaining then.
Okay, one abstention. Okay. So Mrs. Hoffman abstains from number nine. Let's go on to number 10, scholarships and local grant donations. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Miller second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
With gratitude, we accept the scholarships and local grant donations. Next five are fairly in-depth topics that we've got presentations on. First one is the CAC bylaws and membership updates. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Miller first. Second, Mrs. Rajat. Any comments, questions? This is our counseling advisory committee. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Raise your hand. Motion carries. Motion carries. Let's go to approval of counseling plan. Uh, can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Miller, first. Mr. Rajat, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And next is approval of code of conduct. Uh, we've made some policy changes, but uh, per our state law, we have to uh vote separately on the code of conduct, as has been pointed out to us. Any, can I get a motion on the approval of code of conduct?
I motion.
First, Mrs. Miller, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we got ayes on all that. Thank you. Let's go to uh revised date calendar. Simply reflects what the changes have been this last year. Can I get a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman, first. Mrs. Miller, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that motion carries. And the last one is very significant dollar amounts, uh, something that we're doing to fix or to improve our communications as part of school safety. And this is approval of Capital Project Bit Award for Smart Schools Bond Project. Can I have a motion on this one? Mr. Dallo, first. Mrs. Rajat, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Let's go to number uh, to item B for students' acceptance of special education placements, and Mrs. Mylott.
Yes, I'm here if there are any questions.
Okay, can I have a motion on this one? Mr. Rajat, first. Anybody second? Mrs. Miller, second. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Mylott? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now to personnel, and uh, first one is approval of staffing recommendations. We already did the tenures. Uh, can I have a motion on the staffing reps? Any questions? Oh, Mrs. Hoffman has the first motion, who has the second? Mrs. Miller, uh, any comments, questions on staffing recommendations?
Uh, Mr. Pressley, after the announcement, just want to acknowledge that uh, one of the recommendation is um Mrs. Strangis, who is the incoming principal at Okte Elementary School. Uh, the Okte community is welcome to embrace her and welcome her to that position, so I just want to acknowledge that. So um after the formalization of the vote.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have some comments after that, I hope. Uh, I know I'll make a few. Uh, so we can have a motion on uh the staffing recommendations, please. Motion, please. Mrs. Miller, first. Mrs. Hoffman, second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, so we all have ayes, motion carries. Uh, on this one, I I thought we had a nice uh tradition started with the tenures, where uh some of the 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 candidates that have received recognition, uh, you're good to make a few comments. Before uh we allow you to do that, I would like to say, Mrs. Strangis, I've seen you almost at every board meeting, uh, learning how things are done, advocating for students, uh, making presentations that uh promote literacy of our elementary students, and I'd say well-deserved that this uh, that we selected you to be a principal of one of our schools. So thank you very much. Any other board members? Would like to make comments? If not, uh, Mrs. Strangis, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Pressley, and thank you to the board members for this support. I am over-the-top honored and certainly uh thrilled to have been chosen as Okte's next building principal. I have large shoes to fill, certainly. I understand that, but I'm willing to take that on with Okte's strong community. I can't wait to get busy working with all the stakeholders to make this next year a new beginning for all of us. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, a- any further comments? If not, uh, we'll go to the next item, which is ratification of the CSEA contract. So can I have a motion on this one? Mr. Dallo, second. Mrs. Rajat, any comments, questions on this new uh extension? If not, uh, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Do we get any nays? Okay, motion carries. Let's go to second reading of policies and back to Mrs. uh, Mrs. Carmen.
Thank you. So um, tonight, we're asking for approval for the policies that went to the board for first reading last month. Are there any questions regarding any of them, which includes the code of conduct in that one as well?
Okay, any questions? Uh, can I have a motion on the second reading policies? Mrs. Miller, first. Mrs. Hoffman, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So motion carries on the second reading policies.
Um, Mr. Pressley, if I just interject, um, just for the record, for Mrs. Ford's purposes, uh, Mrs. Stevenson left the meeting prior to the start of the business items. So all those approvals that were granted were 5 to 5-0 and or 4-1 with the one abstention from Mrs. Hoffman. Just so so for the record, in the minutes moving forward, we are no, starting with the business items.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Uh, at this point, we'll go to item nine, public comments. I do not see any comments out there. And we see Mrs. Defesiani has said no comments, so we can assume no further public comments at this point. Uh, policy review update, the policy calendar continues. Uh, we look forward to to see more of these come through. Uh, the last meeting, we did talk about some things that are new insertions that will be a little bit more substantive in content, and we look forward to bringing that out. Um, any other public comments for board members? We're closing things down on this meeting. I would like to thank uh the district staff for all the work in supporting the election process. Uh, almost every day, there was a major change, and all those changes have to be done in such a way that it's a fair process. Uh, every voter is treated fairly and equally, and that when we open those ballots and and those those ballots are made available to run through a machine, it's been done very fairly. And that's how it all comes together, although a week late, more than a week late. But uh, it has been done in properly and fairly. We were able to explain to the community, and uh, I I think this will be something that we're we're proud of once it finally closes out. Thank you very much, and thanks for all the hard work put together to make that happen. Any other comments?
I just want to add that um, I did see the video that the counselors had sent out for the seniors, and I found it to be inspiring. In fact, the very last comment that was made, I thought was so appropriate, and that was be kind to others. Um, to our seniors, congratulations, you did it despite this pandemic, and I'm so grateful to be on a board here to serve you. You're our future, you're our leaders. Always pay attention to what's happening around you. Don't take life for granted. And if you do two things, uh, if you do these two things, you'll make a difference, and you'll make our world a better place. And I'm just happy to be part of your journey getting there. Thank you. You're muted, Mr. Pressley.
Thank you for catching that. Uh, if we don't have anything else, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Hoffman, first. Mrs. Rajat, second. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bagdama, can you stop?